Good evening. This is the 51st meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight invocation will be provided by Reverend Melvin E. Truitt, Sr., of St. James Episcopal Church. And after the prayer, we would remain standing to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. O my God, whose kingdom is everlasting and power infinite, have mercy upon this whole land, and so rule the hearts of thy servants, the city council members, and all others in authority, that they, knowing whose ministers they are, may above all things seek thy honor and glory, and that we, in all the people dearly considering whose authority they bear, may faithfully and obediently honor them according to thy blessed word and ordinance. We also pray for the people of Baltimore City, that they will be, that they will maintain, be able to maintain their jobs and other things. All of this we pray through our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and the blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon you from this time forth and evermore. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The clerk will call the rolls of the members.
I'm sorry.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by Courtney Beedle, Beedle, Director of Financial Capability, Cash Campaign of Maryland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the invitation to have Cash Campaign here and present tonight. I know that you all have some really pressing issues that you're going to be discussing tonight, and I want you to know that Cash Campaign of Maryland is here to help provide those creative and thoughtful solutions to addressing financial insecurity in our city and across the state of Maryland. I want to talk to you specifically tonight about one of our biggest and most important services that we offer all year long, or, excuse me, during this time of year, free tax preparation. And so, in your folders in front of you, you've got a green folder with cash on it, you're going to look out for this green flyer here. Cash Campaign of Maryland provides free tax preparation services for individuals this year who earned $55,000 or less last year. And our goal here is to not just provide people with the high-quality and free service provided by amazing skilled and highly-trained volunteers, but to also connect them with other valuable financial resources, to be that thought partner around how they can help reach their financial goals. And we often realize that we are often the only person that's going to encounter them throughout the year to talk to them about their financial lives. It's not there to sell them anything, it's not there to make money off of them. And so, we're connecting people with savings bonds and connected to savings accounts as well. We're providing legal advice, our connection to free legal advice as well. We have over 15 sites across the city this year, which you can see on the back of your flyer. Last year, we served close to 10,000 families in Baltimore, almost 23,000 families across the state of Maryland. In Baltimore City alone, this generated almost $17 million in federal and state tax refunds. That's real money brought back to the economy. And so, if you're interested in free tax prep, or you want to get connected with the service, you can visit our website, bemoreftaxes.org, or you can call our appointment hotline, that's 410-234-8008. Again, bemoreftaxes.org for free tax preparation. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the great work that you all do, helping people get their taxes done for free. It is the Council of Customs Generalized Invocations Act for motion of generalized prayer. Motion by Councilman Dorsey, second by Councilman Risinger. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the February 4th City Council Meeting is on council members' desks.
Their motion to approve the adjournment. Motion by Councilman Cohen, second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion currently in the journal is to adopt the executive nomination.
EA 19-0238, Michael S. Harrison, Commissioner, Baltimore Police Department.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 19-0337, Youth Athletic Protection. For the purpose of establishing certain protections for youth athletes using Baltimore City Department of Recreation and Parks facilities, requiring that youth athletic coaches complete certain training, requiring that youth athletes be removed from athletic play if they are suspected to have sustained certain medical conditions, requiring that certain youth sports programs have an automated external defibrillator at athletic events, requiring youth athletic coaches to report to certain authorities suspected abuse and neglect, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and generally relating to youth athletic protection. Sponsors Scott, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Costello, Bullock, Cohen, Stokes, Snead, Pinkett, Schleifer, Clark, Risinger, Middleton.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, as you know that youth athletics is something that's very near and dear to my heart, but this bill is something very simple but important step for the city of Baltimore. We all know that many of the youth leagues and associations regulate this kind of thing, but it's actually a shame that in the city of Baltimore in 2019, we don't have these practices in place already. We have to make sure that everyone that is coaching our young people are trained, even if they're volunteers, because we know too many countless times around the country with young people dying and losing their lives, simply not because of malpractice or coaches not wanting to help, but not having the training or knowing exactly what to do in situations. So, this piece of legislation, which my office worked with, the Office of Recreation and Parks, and Baltimore Child Abuse Center, will help us push Baltimore forward. So, thank you to my co-sponsors, and I look forward to having a productive hearing in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen, for introducing this, because as you know, Maryland AAU and other organizations already require this. Now, it's going to encompass everybody who uses our facilities and our fields to make sure that people doing background checks and those kind of things. So, thank you for that. This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0338, Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R.A. zoning district variance 1110 Edmondson Avenue. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R.A. zoning district on a property known as 1110 Edmondson Avenue, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaid, and granting a variance from certain off-street parking regulations. Sponsors Bullock.
Oh, this has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19-033, Nying Building Fire and Related Codes Drainage. For the purpose of admitting the city building code and the city residential code to provide for additional limitations on drainage and clarifying and conforming related provisions. Sponsors Dorsey, Cohen, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Scott is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. This bill, it's really trying to correct an issue that shouldn't be an issue. The building and residential code already prohibits discharging of liquids, discharge into the street when it is to become a public nuisance. There are houses all around Baltimore City, particularly ones in northeast Baltimore that are built on top of natural waterways, where basements are, water seeps into basements, and then households pump the water out of the house. And it's fine, you know, most of the year, maybe 350 days a year, it's fine. But when it's freezing, it becomes a public hazard to cars driving, people walking, who walk off of the sidewalk into the street just to try to cross the street on their block. And for two years, I've tried to get the Housing Department to address some of these problems. One in particular, where last winter, me and a group of volunteers had to spend an entire day manually removing about 10 inches of ice that had taken over an entire street in a case where they had known about the problem. The Housing Department had known about this for a very long time, and ever since then, I've tried to get assistance from the Housing Department to address the issue that an elderly resident needs some help trying to direct her drainage somewhere else. And they basically said, "There's nothing we can do about it. It hasn't frozen yet," or, you know, "It's not a problem yet." And now that it has frozen, they're still not doing anything. So, I think that it bears more discussion than what is already having, happening privately. I think that it's worth having a public conversation and a hearing about this, and giving the Housing Department, Public Works, and DOT an opportunity to talk about what they could do to help in such situations, since it's pretty, it's a fairly prevalent issue throughout my district and many other places in the city. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the, what was that? Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0340, RPP Area 18 Middle East South Adding 800 Block of North Chester Street. For the purpose of adding the 800 block of North Chester Street, both sides, to the parking management plan for RPP Area 18, and correcting, conforming, and clarifying related provisions. Sponsors Snead, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Scott, Costello, Cohen, Bullock, Schleifer, Clark, Risinger, Middleton, Stokes, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 19-0136R, Informational Hearing, Street Sweeping. For the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Public Works, the Bureau Chief of Solid Waste Management, and the Director of the Department of Transportation to attend an informational hearing regarding street sweeping, and to describe the progress of the program, including the program's expansion, any time changes, and how this information is disseminated to the community. Sponsors Pinkett, President Young, Henry.
And please note that Councilman Schleifer is a co-sponsor. Councilman Risinger, any more co-sponsors? Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Mr. President. Since 2014, DPW has been in the process of rolling out a citywide effort for street sweeping. The intent is to minimize the amount of discharge that's going into our sewer system. I would be kind to say that the rollout has been a little less than confusing to residents throughout my district and throughout many districts out the city, as there's been concerns over the times of the street sweeping, the quality of the street sweeping, the enforcement. It's become a nightmare for residents, and a nightmare for those who are monitoring both DPW and DOT's rollout of this. And so, I think it's appropriate that we have a hearing to find out the status of this program and its continued rollout, so that we make certain that this program that's supposed to be a benefit to the community actually becomes a benefit. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. Okay, please note that Councilman Bullock is a co-sponsor, Councilwoman, I mean, Council Vice President Middleton is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0137R, Informational Hearing, Baltimore City Recycling Program. For the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Public Works and the Head of the Bureau of Solid Waste to discuss Baltimore City's recycling program and its progress. Sponsors Stokes, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Snead, Pinkett, Schleifer, Clark, Risinger, Middleton.
And please note, Councilman Costello is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
President, thank you, Mr. President. It's just an informal hearing on the recycling here in Baltimore. Last week, we had a hearing, and we got two different numbers. They said it was at 14%, then we heard 17%. So, that meeting is to get an update on the recycling here in Baltimore, how we can increase it and include our schools in the recycling also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0138R, Request for State Action Expanding the State Public Art Mandate. For the purpose of calling upon the General Assembly to pass and the Governor to sign legislation that expands the current public arts mandate requirement to acquire public art in any building that receives at least 50% of its construction funds from the state, and requiring local input when local governments like Baltimore also assist in providing construction funds. Sponsors Middleton, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Stokes, Snead, Clark, Risinger.
Please note, Councilman Pinkett is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Presently, the state law provides that buildings fully financed by the state of Maryland must have public art. And this particular bill would broaden this mandate to include even buildings only partially financed by the state. Broadening the public art mandate would require that public art be installed in a more diverse array of local facilities, including community centers and community colleges. This is basically an important step, especially for this jurisdiction like Baltimore, that jointly funds projects, construction projects in the city with the state. So, I just kind of look at this as another avenue of really showing our history and culture, and another way in advancing equity in the city. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently rules suspended. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of adopting the Resolution 19-0138R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this resolution is adopted.
And thank you, colleagues, for signing on.
Thank you. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. As your motion to approve the consent count, moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this count is approved. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges to our guests from the Baltimore City Police Department Command Staff.
Second by Councilwoman Snead. All those in favor of extending the floor privileges to our guests, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, your guests may take the floor.
And, guests, could you please come and take the floor? And you can all just...
Is this a part of the Year of the Women?
This is your chance to shine.
Counsel Vice President, is this also a part of the Year of the Women?
Well, I'm getting to that, Mr. President. Good evening, Council President and my fellow colleagues. I requested time on the floor to recognize an historic change here in Baltimore and inside the Baltimore Police Department. The Baltimore Police Department has elevated several officers to key leadership roles. The officers that were elevated just happen to be women with strong... with strong roots and ties to the community that we hope will improve the quality of life for all of the residents of Baltimore City. And while we celebrate this group of women as being the first, we know that their leadership roles and can-do spirit will pave the way forward, that this will not be the last group of women from all backgrounds to take on such leadership roles. I would be remiss if I did not mention Violet Hill White, the first black officer to be appointed to the Baltimore City Police Department. She was appointed in December 1937 by William P. Lawson, the city's police commissioner at that time. For those who may not know, in 2018, Mayor Pew, the council president, and I worked collaboratively to establish, to re-establish, the Baltimore Women's Commission. The commission is a resource for women to assist them in assessing services and assistance intended to improve the lives and the lives of their families, which includes men. Additionally, the commission's vision is to empower women through education and through coordination of opportunities. It is with great honor and pride to honor these women who stand before us. Each one of them is a beacon of light that will attract and guide many other young women to follow their footsteps. I pray that good health and safety be with you on and off duty, and we have citations for each one of you. And, Mr. President, do you want to come down and join us?
Can I hand you one by one?
Yes. I'll read this, and then I can just call your names. And this is, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to..." And I'll call each of your names in a second here. "...in recognition of your dedication to the public safety and well-being of residents in the city of Baltimore. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution be presented on this 11th day of February 2019, signed by the President Bernard C. Jack Young, myself, and all members. We really appreciate and love you all for what you do, for your service to this city." And this first one is Lieutenant Colonel Cherie Briscoe, is not with us tonight, but we send love to her. Lieutenant Colonel Latonya Lewis, congratulations. And, also, Latonya Lewis was major of the Northwest District, so congratulations to you and your elevation. Major Brigus is not here this evening as well, and she is the present major of the Northwest District. Major Monique Brown, congratulations. Major Tameisha Brown. All right. Major Stephanie Lancy Delgado, congratulations. Major Rhonda McCoy. Major Natalie Preston, congratulations. Captain Lisa Robinson. All right, congratulations. Let's give another round of applause for these hard-working, elevated women. Yes, colleagues, if you can, if you want to squeeze in.
Yes, you got to tuck that in, man.
I want short people in front of here, and they...
Close it up. You got to close it up. LT, you got to close it up.
Where are we going? You're going to take my tip. There we go. Yay!
That was history. The women of the Baltimore City Police Department getting promoted is a big thing in the city of Baltimore. We're looking forward to the great work that you all are going to do to help Endo Room Commissioner Harrison turn this city around. So, we counting on you all to make sure that you get a good job done. All right? Thank you. We would now move the bills on to second reader.
EA 19-0229, Frank Bonaventure Jr., alternate member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 5.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held hearings on February 5th and February 6th of 2019. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA 19-0230, Anisa Jai Bonner, alternate member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 11.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 19-0232, Maishala Middleton, member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 4.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 19-0233, Ariel Taylor, Commissioner, Baltimore City Youth Commission, District 4.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 19-0234, Ayanna Thomas, Commissioner, Baltimore City Youth Commission, District 6.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 19-0237, Joan Carter Conway, trustee, employees and elected officials, retirement system, Board of Trustees, District 14.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 18-0306, Health Code Clean Air Regulation. For the purpose of regulating the emissions from certain commercial solid waste incinerators, defining certain terms, requiring the continuous monitoring of certain pollutants, setting emissions limits for certain pollutants, requiring the production and public disclosure of certain emissions reports, requiring commercial solid waste incinerators to allow certain inspections, establishing a certification process for air monitoring contractors, setting certain penalties, setting special effective dates, and generally relating to clean air regulations. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Council Vice, you have committee announcement, Vice President? Councilman Scott, any committee announcements over there on this side? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee on March 4th at 5:01 p.m. immediately following a hearing that Councilman Costello will announce in a second, will hold a hearing for Council Resolution 18-0092R, monthly council stats with the Baltimore Police Department here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilman Scott indicated, Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold the hearing on Monday, March 4th, in chambers at 5:00 p.m. to be televised on Channel 25. City Council Resolution 18-0091, Budget Oversight Hearings for the Baltimore City Police Department. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations will hold the following seven hearings. First is Bill 18-0107R on Tuesday, March 5th at 10:00 a.m. This is a voting session, investigative hearing, arson and fire fatality awareness, community risk reduction program, at the request of Council Vice President Middleton. On Tuesday, March 5th at 10:01 a.m., we will hear Bill 18-0310, City Property, renaming the Oliver Pool to the John D. Murdoch Pool, at the request of Councilman Stokes. On Tuesday, March 5th at 10:02 a.m., committee will hear, pardon me, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
On Tuesday, March 5th at 10:02 a.m., committee will hear 19-0336, Public Ethics Law Conforming Modifications, at the request of the Board of Ethics. Move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, you may proceed.
The committee on Tuesday, March 5th at 10:10 a.m., will hear Bill 19-0337, Youth Athlete Protection, at the request of Councilman Scott. On Tuesday, March 5th at 10:20 a.m., committee will hear 19-0323, Hotels Anti-Human Trafficking Training, at the request of Councilman Burnett. Hotels Anti-Human Trafficking Training, at the request of Councilman Burnett. On Tuesday, March fifth, at 10:30 AM, committee will hear nineteen dash zero one two seven R, Request for State Action, Reform Residential Retail Electricity and Natural Gas Markets, at the request of Councilman Henry. Move to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor suspending rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, you may proceed.
Committee will hear on Tuesday, March fifth, at 10:40 AM, Council Bill nineteen dash zero three three two, The Baltimore City Sustainability Plan, at the request of the Administration, the Office of Sustainability. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, February the twentieth, 2019, beginning at 10:00 AM, to follow nomination, Baltimore City Department of Planning, David Rye. And also, the Executive Appointments will hold a televised hearing on Wednesday, March the sixth, at 5:00 PM, to review the nomination of Baltimore City Police Department, Michael S. Harrison, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, at 2:00 PM, and that is to hear City Council Bill for the city streets closing a portion of West Barney Street, and that's the only hearing that we'll be having that day, that City Council Bill eighteen zero three zero three. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero two seven seven, on April third, at 1:00 PM in the Council Chambers. This is zoning, IMU industrial mixed-use zoning districts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I solemnly rise to ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for the thirty victims of homicide in Baltimore in 2019, and all those that we have lost to overdose and opioid epidemic as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognize Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton.
I guess I'd just first like to remind everyone that there are a number of meet and greets for the Police Commissioner, and the first one is still on for this evening, from seven to nine, at Forest Park High School. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, February twenty-fifth, 2019, at 5:00 PM, and may we have a moment of silence for Dr. Charles Franklin, the thirty, the families of the thirty victims of homicide for 2019, and also for the families that continue to suffer with the opioid epidemic.
There have been no further questions. This concludes the fifty-first meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.